You're watching Medfield TV.
We will begin with public input. Do we have any public input? No? All right. We don't have any minutes to approve, and so we'll start with new business, the school choice hearing and vote.
So, Madam Chair, I'd ask if the school committee opened up the school choice hearing for next school year at this time, if you have a motion.
Okay. So, I motion to open the hearing for school choice.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful.
So, Madam Chair, I know you're going to ask if anyone in the audience has anything to say about it, but I'm going to just recommend, just as Medfield has since the beginning of school choice, that we don't participate in the program. I mean, based on the fact that we have concerns around elementary class sizes and others, that it wouldn't be a good idea for us to open up our doors for school choice. So, I'd ask that you vote not to participate in the school choice program.
Okay, but before we have a formal discussion amongst ourselves, do we have any input about?
Yeah, just a question for Chris.
Can you come to the microphone, Chris?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
My question around school choice is just around, have we ever done a financial analysis of school choice on how, from just from the finances, the financial part of it?
Right.
I understand the philosophical argument, and I actually agree with a lot of the philosophical argument, but it would be, I think, really helpful to see the financial side of the picture. Because, you know, with school choice, there's just been a lot of misinformation about the financial side of it, and I just think it would be helpful to have a really, an in-depth analysis about what the cost would be for us and what we would gain from it financially.
Right, okay.
Can you tell me specifically what your thoughts are around the financial side? Is it something that you feel like, what is your thought around that? Do you have one?
Well, I think the, there's been a lot of comments made about the per pupil expense for it, and that we wouldn't necessarily get back what we consider be the per pupil expense, but that's mostly, it's like, right, it's like paying for a bus, paying $2,000 for a bus and not filling all the seats. If we have 35 seats open at Blake, basically they're not being filled, we're already hovering those costs for teachers, for curriculum expenses, for overhead, whatever, and we have 35 empty seats. I just think it's helpful to be able to look at the cost for that and say, what are the pros and cons? So, I mean, I actually, I agree completely with the philosophical argument around school choice. I can't disagree with anything that's been said. I just think, again, I've been taught in the corporate world, when you're making a proposal, you look at the pros and you look at the cons, and all I've heard are all the cons, but I think the financial picture would be helpful to have as potential pros, and to look at those. So, that's just my comment.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, just when we went to...
When we went to Senator Feeney's office, we had a very...
Down the hill.
Down the hill, thank you.
We had a kind of extensive conversation around finances and around the kind of pluses and minuses. I mean, obviously, the plus of school choice is that we're able to bring kids into our district, that people in the world kind of have more, I guess, more latitude in the choice of what kind of education they would prefer to have. In terms of finances, the $5,000 cap remains. They kind of keep on trying to put the $7,500 in, and then they bring it back out and back in. The issue around that is that there is a really significant portion of risk around the finances, in that we are a small district that is entirely funded by our town. If we run into extraordinary costs with a child, then even just through an accident in a short period of time, whatever, we end up having to absorb those costs, which may then blow out of the water any, any income that we may have made, made from that child, even if it's kind of, you know, using what I understand, you're talking about kind of the economy of scale, right? So that we're really thinking about putting more children in and that we're able to kind of provide those resources. I also have to say that I think, right now, we have such significant space problems, and that they are not currently happening at the high school, but they will be happening at the high school very soon. And I have kind of a philosophical part that goes with the monetary part, which is, if we truly believe that we would be a better or more open choice for any child who would wish to come here, why would we only open that to high school where we had a little bit of space? There's a little bit of a cynical component to getting just a little bit more income from a child to fill in some period of time, when indeed, what we're really looking through when we bring a child into our district is that that is a child that belongs here. And this, why would we bring them in kindergarten, or first grade, and have them have the opportunity to go through the entire educational system, instead of having to really make up for time, possibly, by the time they get to high school? So, there is some, I don't think there's any assured benefit with a $5,000 stipend for a school choice. I think that we have really significant space problems that don't allow us to do that, but I also feel like we need to always be focusing on any child that comes into this district is a child that is, I hate to say ours, because I don't believe in possession of a child, but is a child of our community. And to simply say, yeah, come in for high school, and we appreciate your $5,000, or your, you know, this much more, incrementally this much more, in the short term, I think, I can't be assured that it would work financially, but in the long term, it's not the right thing to do right now. If we ever have more space, if there's ever a time where we feel as though our resources are a little less tight, yeah, I mean, every year, we continue to revisit it. So, that's generally been my opinion.
Yeah, and I've been reading some articles around it, and some of the things I've read, it's really, for it to make a difference in our budget, we would need the volume, you know?
Right, and at this point, what could, I mean, we have to do, you have to have 10 children per grade, beginning in high school and going through that.
Yeah.
That's like your minimum commitment. So, all of a sudden, you have 40 kids in the high school, which is increasing our, essentially, our high school population pretty significantly.
Hmm.
And, you know, as we start getting larger classes, even if we just accepted one class, you know, as we start getting larger classes through, we are going to end up bumping up against our own space needs, so.
All right, so, do we have...
Does anyone have any other comments?
I haven't done enormous amounts of research, but just listening, introducing, increasing complexity without clarity that we're gaining rewards, and I recognize the pros and cons, but have we really, what have we been doing historically on this school choice?
We have not.
Not yet.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, is if we really wanted to take it on, I think we would need to do, you know, additional study, but you're introducing a lot of complexity that...
It's a systemic decision, it's not a one-off or a four-year decision. It's, it's a decision about how, how we welcome people in, essentially, and that becomes a much larger discussion, not simply like kind of a discussion about a little bit more income here, a little bit more income there.
And I see the point that you're bringing up about the philosophical idea of bringing them in in kindergarten and giving them the entire Medfield experience, and if you even just put that completely aside, it's still the risk of, you know, just for the small amount of revenue it brings in, of opening the doors to a population that could then be even more expensive to, it, you're right, the clarity is not there.
I mean, it doesn't take much to kind of financially, any school system, to knock, to knock you off your pins.
Right.
Right? I mean, it's, and that's, again, very much about Medfield, we are entirely self-funded. It could be, you know, one of our own kids who all of a sudden had an enormous need, but that still kind of blows everything out of the water.
Hmm.
And we're always looking for, you know, ways to help support kids, and we wouldn't support a child that came to us at any less.
Without a doubt. All right, so, do we have a motion? Oh, Leo, did you have any comment on school choice?
No, I would like to just make a motion that we not adopt school choice this year.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yeah, actually, he can't move.
Oh, you're, oh, sorry, Leo, you're not allowed, but thank you.
Uh, I don't...
I make a motion that we do not adopt school choice this year for the fiscal year '20.
All right. Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All righty, that does not pass, thank you. Curriculum directors update. Dr. Myers.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me, just as a quick, I know you've just finished that last agenda item, but as someone who sat in that seat years and years ago and said, I was not a proponent, I've never worked in a district that actually had school choice, but it is an interesting financial question, I think, and, but I think one of the things that you need to recognize is that $5,000 number started in 1993 with the education, it's never been indexed anywhere, where you're not spending $5,000 a student, as many districts were in 1993 when the Education Reform Act came through. So, that's part of the conversation. If they, if they did it like charter, where you would actually pay a student going to a charter school exactly the right, exactly the number that you're spending...
That's a different conversation.
That's a whole different conversation. So, anyway, just a quick aside, not probably all that helpful, but anyway, hopefully I'll be helpful tonight with the, I've really enjoyed my time here in Medfield, working on curriculum and, and assessment, and one of the tasks that Dr. Marsden asked me in the fall was to look at other districts and to try to bring some structure to a review process that, that this district has, and, and I'm going to say this probably a few different times, there's a lot of work going on in this district around curriculum, a lot. The content specialists, not just because I want to see it, but the content specialists are doing tremendous work, and, and the principals at the elementary level who kind of take that on as well. So, I've had an opportunity to meet with all of them more than once, individually and in larger groups, and so there's a lot of work going on, but I think the work can be structured, and, and I think the district can really look at what other districts have done. So, what I did is I did a scan area communities and talked to different curriculum directors, talked to some of my former colleagues that, you know, that I've known over the years, and I tried to glean some of the best things that have been going on around curriculum renewal, curriculum review and renewal, kind of across certainly Eastern Massachusetts and, and in other places. So, so that's the backdrop for, for this discussion tonight. So, what I found, there were a couple of ways to approach this. One is some essential questions that frame the whole process, that I think when, when it's decided that you're going to start a structure for this, and I'll talk a little bit about how that process can, can work, or how it works in other places, and how I think it could really work well here, but whatever discipline you decide on, and we also have a recommendation from the leadership team about where to start and how to go about that process, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And some of the essential questions, obviously, in any discipline, where are we now? What are we doing? What's the current status of what the curriculum, what curriculum looks like in whatever discipline you decide to, to, to study? How does the program currently function? You know, what are some of the good things that are going on? And, as you can see here, where do we want to go? Some of that is guided, social studies is a really good current example, some of that is guided by changes in the statewide curriculum frameworks, and so, you know, where do we want to go? For instance, for social studies, it would be, where, how are we aligned, or how are we not aligning right now to, to what the state has just approved about a year ago? And then, what's a vision of teaching and learning for this particular program? You know, what do we want it to be about? How do we want, how do we want to approach that? And how do we want to look at, how do we stretch that? How do we make it look like we'd really want it to be if we had unlimited resources? And, you know, that's kind of a way to start it, and then you kind of get into some other conversations. And then, what gaps exist, and this is kind of driven by data that the district already has, what gaps exist between where we would like to be and where, where we currently are? Some of that's, some of that's probably MCAS-related, some of that is local assessments that the district already has, some of it may be comparing it to other places that might be doing something different or something somewhat unique. So, that's a conversation that needs to take place with, with a committee that's formed in that particular discipline. And then, what are the areas that need attention? Do we need a more structured program, or do we just need more resources in that program and give, give teachers an opportunity to have more resources at their disposal to And then, it, in each discipline, at least in, again, in places where I've talked to people and looked at their process, it's generally a year-long process. It starts in the summer, it starts with most districts, and we actually made some decisions this morning about summer research and development, and where to place the money, and who to, who to ask to do some work in different areas, and, and the focus would be more, if we decide, say, for instance, and you'll see in a future slide, that science and technology might be the one that leads this next year, there's already some approvals that have already taken place, that people will hear about in the next couple of days, about, about work that people will do in, in the summer around science and, science and technology. So, as that year goes on, so it starts in the summer, and then that is, that continues to, the committee continues to work throughout the year, developing plans to address areas of improvement, determining resources needed to fully, and I put in this because I think it's important, and/or partially implement the plans. I mean, a lot of this is budget-driven, and it depends on, you know, what kind of resources you are able to project going forward in order to do this, and in some cases, the plan will be, we can do this this year, we can do this next year, and we can do this the year after, based on financial conditions. So, that's, so, looking at not just a wish list or a wish plan, but looking at a plan that this is, this is full implementation, this is partial, but will get to full over a period of time. And then, as those plans are being developed, I think it's, it's important to gather input from people who are not on the committee, so, so staff, parents in the community, so a kind of a mid-year check-in is what a lot of districts are doing. This is where we are right now, this is the work that's going ahead, this is, these are the things that, these are the things that we're hearing, presenting them to, you know, all of the groups, all of the active groups that are in this community, and just saying, this is what, where we are, and this is really what it looks like, and this is why we think, you know, we'll continue to improve in this area. And then, once you get that input, obviously, then you'd refine the plan going forward. And then, sometime around this time of the year, May, June, most districts have on their school committee agendas, a proposal, a discussion of what took place during the year, and then recommendations for anything that, that needs to take place going forward, so...
Chris, sorry.
Go ahead.
Quick question.
Sure.
And that is, gather input from staff, parents, and the community. So, is this like a focus group? How is this kind of, how does this matter?
Yeah, you can do it, that's a great question. You can do it in a number of ways. You can, you could go, I know some districts will, you know, have PTO meetings around this particular topic, and, and have this as the lead agenda item. You know, we're looking at science at the elementary level or at the middle school level, and, and there are other ways that, you know, focus groups, you could just invite people to come, you know, to a meeting here, and say, here's where we are with this, and here's what we think, here's what we're learning from other places, here's what we're learning from research, here's what the state is telling us, or, or recommending to us.
Okay.
So, that, yeah, so that's, you know, that's usually how, you know, I've been trying to figure out, everyone, you know, districts do it in different ways.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It depends on what the culture of the community is in some ways.
Right, right.
What's the best way to get more people in the room, really, is the question.
Yeah.
So...
And I was going to ask, because I, how do you determine who's on the committee?
Yes, yeah, that's a good question. Usually, it starts with the professionals. So, we have, for instance, if we did decide to lead with science and technology, which is a recommendation, that obviously, the department head here would be involved, Orla Berry, who's, and I thought it would be a good way to start this, because she's done tremendous work in this. We've had a number of different meetings over the year, and she has a lot of data, so this would be a good kind of sample activity to really move this forward, and then to be able to find out, you know, what works and what doesn't work in the process, not in the content, but in the process. So, you'd have teachers, obviously, you know, secondary teachers would be, that would be their discipline. So, you'd invite people who were involved in that, elementary teachers, you'd probably, you'd definitely have a principal or two. The, the new curriculum director would be leading this, the director of innovation and instruction would be leading this, and so it would be, you know, regular meetings. Now, you, I've been investigating this in other places, the initial committee can be somewhat large and then break into subcommittees for certain work, or it can be relatively small, and then ask for volunteers, depending on where you are in the process. So, that's a decision that the district will have to make about how to, you know, how to go about that. So, there are a couple of different ways that you could approach it.
Thank you.
So, again, we should, I put together, as other districts have kind of a, an open piece that's very public, a lot of districts have these right on their website, so when, you know, people, the community wants to know, you know, what's the task, what are people working on? As I said, I think science, technology, engineering, which is the state standard, the way they describe it, pre-K to 12 would be a good place to start, because you have a lot that's already taken place, not that the other disciplines don't, but they, but this would be an opportunity for a new director and a new committee to really get this, this process going. And you have a new program at the elementary level that you've been working on for professional development, the FOS program at the elementary level, so there's some things in motion already on that, so I think it would be, plus, you know, it's a, it's a hot topic, so it'd be a good one to really, you know, get, get the community involved in, it's a lot of interest.
You know, Chris, I have another question about this, because I think, oh, 2020, 2021, 2022, I think, oh, for goodness sake. So, I'm wondering, is it possible to have just with, you know, you have the director of instruction and innovation, and could we just have things happening simultaneously in their tracks, because we have department chairs who can then lead the tract? I mean, it's just, maybe I'm being too impatient, but...
No, 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 I think that's, I think that's a great, a great question, and I think it, it, you know, comes up, it's come up in other districts, you know, the same way. It's just that when you decide what you want to budget, and what you want to focus on, and what you want to spend most of your energy on, it's better to do it disciplined at a time, at least from other district. That does not mean, and you'll see the list of the work that's going on in the summer in every discipline in this district.
Yes, correct, yes.
That doesn't mean that that's, and it doesn't mean that, that the department heads, or the literacy specialist, or, you know, the library media person is not doing things in their own framework, in their own area. So, that will continue to happen, it's just, it's just that many districts will focus on one area, but you're right, that's usually the question, oh, we're not going to do math until 2021, 22? What do you mean? And...
I mean, just to Chris's point, this morning when we met on the R and D proposals, we have three or four different proposals that are starting on the history and social studies already this summer, you know, in, in preparation for the work that's going to happen in 2021, so...
And it's not that we're building a new curriculum, we have nothing out there.
Correct.
I mean, really, to give, personally, my opinion, if we're going to get a true kind of review and overview, we need to be able to kind of focus as many of our resources on one place, otherwise, you're just constantly scattershot, particularly knowing how kind of slim we are administratively, you know, like, there's only so much that, you know, one group of people can do, so...
And that's where you're going to find gaps, because people are focusing on it, but this, it's not a system-wide effort. So, that's when gaps come up over a few years. So, I think that's, I think that's been, and so, you know, we put this together with over a five-year plan, that's what a lot of districts will do, and then, you know, we kind of bunched up three or four different areas, wellness, fine arts, which is comprehensive with fine arts, music, visual arts, and world language. But then, this answers some of your questions. Every district, or the ones that I looked at, always have a caveat, modifications to the curriculum review cycle may be made in response to changes in the Massachusetts state frameworks and the state assessment program. So, you know, for instance, you know, the, the history social studies piece is not driven by a state assessment, they haven't been able to ever come up with one, that everybody that, not everybody, because not everyone agrees on any of them, but, but that people could agree on generally. And so, that's why I thought it would make sense in talking to the leadership team to really look at science, and then, and then the R and D that's already going to take place, you can build off of that, and then focus on social studies and history in the following year, and it'll also give you a chance to assess the process and see how well that worked or didn't work, and, you know, were there some gaps in that, were we not paying that much attention? The other thing that I saw in a few districts that I think is something that, that the district can explore is that, is that some of this is driven by a program called Understanding by Design, and it's impressive, but it needs some, it needs some professional development in itself. So, that's a piece that I just wanted to throw that out, because some of, some of the neighbors, neighboring districts here are driving their curriculum renewal and revision process by that program. It's got a lot of the same tenants that I mentioned earlier on, the essential questions are relatively the same, but, but it's a more, it's a little bit more of a structured program. So, the district certainly should at least consider looking at it and trying to figure out, and then talking to other districts about the value of it, or, you know, there's some expense to training, certainly, that the district would need to consider.
Just going back to the prior point.
Yeah.
For the review cycle, how do you prioritize, I understand the science, technology, and why do you go from history to, you know, any logic between...
Well, history, social studies was really because the framework, just the new, the revised framework just came out within the last year, so we thought we'd tee that up on the second one, and then you could change the others, it's not, it's not...
Yeah, so there's, there's changes in, in social studies around civics and economics, so...
Right.
That's what some of the R and Ds that are going to be happening this summer, are looking at how to infuse civics and economics into the current courses at our upper level, and then how we can, at the, at the elementary level, how can we bring literature into this conversation, so that we're, we're not just doing it in silos, but it's all, all together as one? So, I think that's, you know, the direction that we're moving.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Chris.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me, let me just thank you again for, I had a chance, as you know, to work with, with four of you on the screening committees, one for the Wheelock search, Tim was the only one that didn't, because you're brand new, and we didn't have a search for you, but who knows? That, but it was great to work with, with all of you on that, on those searches, and I just, you know, as someone who really believes that talent part of the business is so important, just bringing in the best talent that you can bring in and getting them in the right places, that's something I've believed about leadership all, you know, as long as I've been doing this. You've really done a great job doing that, and I know that Dr. Marsden announced the director of innovation and instruction this afternoon, and it was a really good process, and the Wheelock principle is up and, you know, be up and running, and that things, you know, really good things will be happening there. So, as someone who really looks at leadership teams and all of that, I mean, you really have, have scaled this up. I, I think Christine Power will spend a day, and people will go, already better than that prior person who's in the job, so, I'm not worried about that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I was so rude, I didn't even introduce or allow Maddie to introduce her new rollout.
Yeah, this is Campbell, he'll be replacing me.
Hey, Campbell.
Does he, does he want to talk about what we've been working on right now?
No, we'll do that later, I just, I felt badly that we were sitting here, and I thought, oh, we didn't even acknowledge the new face.
We have to change Peter.
I literally ran in here so fast.
I know.
Where's Peter, right? I don't know. I ran in here so fast, and I kind of saw you out of the corner of my eye, and I was like, huh, Peter got a funny new haircut, and that, that I think your haircut is funny, it's just be different on Peter.
Different from Peter, right?
Yes, and then I was like, okay.
That's all right, because I know everybody already, so it's good to be here as his new position.
Great. Excited.
Wait, are you leaving, Maddie?
I need to get tissues.
Oh, okay, so, I was like, don't go.
We feel bad about you leaving, too. So we feel bad about you leaving too.
Leaving a computer.
All right, super. I'm sorry about that. So, we've got the draft for the next year's school committee dates.
So those are in your packet, starting on August 22nd, and going all the way through. Very similar to the schedule that we've had this year, the day of the week changed, but it's all the same number of meetings. You know, we can always add and subtract as we need to going forward, but it's nice to have a framework to work from.
No, but only one overlaps with the master planning committees.
I plan that out for you.
Thank you. It was really nice. Thank you.
I just have one question. Is the June 11th to the June 18th one, just because we're trying to get a last one, and usually they're not, like, just one week apart?
Right, so that'd be the one that we could, we're talking about it later in the agenda too, whether that could be a workshop, and it could be later. It doesn't have to be right, right after.
Okay.
It's also the one that sometimes we look at, if, if things have gone funky with, like, an override vote or something like that. Last year, no, it wouldn't.
Okay.
Yes. All right. So do we have a motion to approve the proposed dates for 2019?
I make a motion to approve the proposed dates.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Wonderful. We've got some school trips. Should we start with the Dominican Republic?
Absolutely. Ellen?
I'd like to go with that. I'll beat you for it.
No, no. If you're taking school from the new members, I'm going, not her.
Well, the first, I just want to, if I could just put my department chair hat on for one second, because I can't resist, after Chris's report and all of that, because I was one of the people that spoke with him, because I actually did want to just mention to you folks that this year with the juniors, we are, we're piloting the apple testing, which is the actful assessment of, of performance towards proficiency in learning languages, which is what will lead to the Seal of Bili literacy in Massachusetts, hopefully next year. And Jeff and I have talked about this a lot over the year, and that's kind of, we don't have a state assessment for world languages. I'm not sure if we ever will, but this is a national test. And it's a test that the state has accepted for students to, if they perform at a certain level, to earn the Seal of Bili literacy. And it's, it's exciting. It drives our, it drives our curriculum. It has been driving our curriculum for strongly, for three years, I'd say. And we definitely have used the types of questions and the types of tasks, and Maddie can attest to that, and how, and getting students to be proficient in a language, using a language, and being, being able to communicate in a language is really what we're all about. So I wanted to mention that while I'm here, because that's my.
Take the opportunity, absolutely.
That's my hat, and I just wanted to kind of make sure that the school committee was aware of that work that was going on, and it is very directly related to what Chris mentioned before. So if you guys had any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
A couple. First of all, which students, all juniors taken?
The juniors are all the juniors who are in a Level Four of spoken language, or Three or Four of Latin. That, that's actually a reading test. It's not a speaking test, but it's a, it's a lira, it's actful as equivalent for Latin.
Okay. Do you have thoughts or about, I mean, obviously, you would be overjoyed if you had a hundred percent kind of passing of the.
Yeah, so the state has, the state has set a very high bar. The state has set an extremely high bar. They have said that students have to be an intermediate high, which is a lot of years of studying of a language. So I think this year, we're just, my, my philosophy is just to see where we are.
Just to see how it goes. It doesn't hinge on any part of their assessment, or?
It's not going to count in their, in, in their grade or anything like that. I don't think it ever will, to be perfectly honest. I don't see that as something that we would want to do. But we do, we are moving more and more to assessing that way in the classroom. So students shouldn't be shocked or surprised when they see this kind of, of evaluation. It's a lot of speaking, it's writing tasks that are supposed to be useful in everyday, in everyday life, like emails, or blogging, and things like that. I've actually, I've been grading them. I got certified on the side to grade them, so I would get to know the test better. So, so I don't think students will be surprised by what they see, but the standard is really high. So there's been a pilot group that's been working behind the scenes in the state of Massachusetts for about four years to get it going, and they wanted the state to accept intermediate mid, and they're still trying to kind of fight for that, for the level, but the state said that they were going for intermediate high. There's another set of awards that are being, that these districts have gotten together, and they're calling them the pathway awards. And if we agree on the, on the stipulations, which are really just that we followed all the rules for the state, for the seal, like we've informed everybody that this is happening, and that, you know, anybody who speaks a second language is invited to try to test in this manner and all of that, which we've already done with the juniors, that we can award these pathway awards too. They're not recognized officially by the state, but they're being recognized by many districts in the state as sort of an individual pathway. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Yeah, so. And, you know, I kind of hope at some point that we'll be able to also get some data points, not just for graduation, but at certain points in our program, that we, because they're, they have two sets of these tests. One is for the younger children. So I've actually heard kids, I've graded kids that I think are probably five years old or six years old, taking this test. So they have one for, like, they call it the novice, the A form, the novice intermediate form, and then they have one that we're doing is the B form, the intermediate, and the advanced form. So it's for everybody.
Right. So obviously, there's a ramping of kind of what is considered bili literacy per age and developmental stage, and?
It's by level, right? But you're right, developmentally, really young children aren't able to, even if they're bilingual, they're not able to perform at the advanced level because the advanced level means that they can produce paragraphs, both in writing and in speaking. And so little kids, no matter what great, what, how fluent they are, can't do that.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
That's my aside. My agenda item is that I'd like to propose to bring a group of students next year to the Dominican Republic. This past February, I had the opportunity to go with EF, which is a travel group education first, that we've been using for a lot of our trips. And it was a teacher workshop, and they brought us to Madrid, and they kind of showcased all, a lot of their different programs. And I was very favorably impressed with how they organized their different, their different programs. And I became intrigued by one that they were selling to us. Of course, I'm an easy customer, right? But it was a service learning trip. And the more I found out about it, the more I thought, well, we don't really have anything like this in Medfield that we've done. And I'm kind of interested in it. So I came back and mentioned it to a couple of people, and people seemed to think that it might be something that we would be interested in doing. And really what, the reason that I'm, I'm interested in pursuing this kind of a trip is that I think it's a little different from our other language trips that we've been doing. It is an immersion language community service trip. So what it is, is it incorporates immersion, some language learning in the mornings of the trip, and then in the afternoon, we would be working on a service project that they have put together for us in the Dominican Republic. And the hope would be that then the students that go will get a chance to actually use their language while they're completing the service project. It's an eight-day trip. I, I think for me, doing it after school at the end, in June, sort of like the Ecuador trip did, seems to me like it makes sense in terms of what I do here and other things that take my time. So that's kind of why I put it there, to be perfectly honest. It's, days two through six is what I just described to you, the, the language piece in the morning and the community service in the afternoon. And then there's one kind of relaxing beach day at the end, and then we come home. So I, I, I trust EF at this point. I've traveled with them now on this trip, and we've sent a bunch of other trips with them. China uses them. The Galapagos trip used them. I'm not sure who else, but.
China's used them.
China, yeah, so.
So what, what are your service options?
I don't know what they are yet. They're gonna, when we, when we get our dates and everything, they have contacts on the ground there, and then, and they send you, you know, what they think.
Yeah.
I know one of the teachers that went with me in February, they did, they worked on a, I think on building something. They were building like either part of a wall, of a, of a house that they were putting back together, or something to that effect. I know she talked a lot about the construction.
Cool. I have a couple of questions. First, what part of the island?
Um.
Is it Santiago?
Well, Santiago is where we, where we do the, the day trip, and where we fly into. I don't know. I don't know if that's even specified, but I can find out.
And the other thing is, is I always want to try to be sensitive when we do, quote, service trips.
Yep.
That we also emphasize that there's a wide range of population in any place that we go, and that not, and that the population, not everybody in the Dominican Republic is in need of, of service, you know? That there's a wide range of people, and that there's a wide range of history, colonial history as well as kind of native history. And then we're giving kind of a wider picture than we're going to go do an immersion program and help people. You know, like, it's, I'd like to see the sophistication around it.
I think the beauty that comes out of these trips, like when I took the group to Guatemala, it wasn't just, oh, where the gringos are coming to save the day.
This is what I worry about, quite frankly.
But, but, but when the reality is, when you get feet on the ground, looking in the eyeballs, you see all kinds of people.
And you see people.
And I think that's where the compassion, the empathy, the understanding, the richness of a culture comes together. So then whatever baggage that you arrive with, you know, because even some of my students said, I felt bad coming even, you know, because I have so much. But it really, it's an equalizer, you know, and it's, it's a.
Great, thanks. I'm very grateful that you are taking your very own time of your vacation to take our students. These kinds of trips change lives. Yeah, to me, I mean, I've always been a big believer in, in travel, but I haven't done as much of it for, for certain, for various reasons. I have done plenty of it in my career. I've been in this business for a long time, in recent years. I think that the, our language trips at the moment are very, we have had, we've got the homestay component, which gives the, you know, the face-to-face value, but they are a little, there, there's, there's also, for a lot of kids, it's, it's a Tory, it's more tur- tur- touristic in that we have, we've built that in. And that would not be the purpose of this. The purpose of this, in my mind, would be for our students to get to know real people.
Right.
And to talk to real people, and to get something done in the meantime while we're there. So.
It's beautiful. It has amazing history. It really does.
Yeah, so that would be my, my.
This may be obvious, but is it for the Spanish speaking only, or is it, because the way it's written, it is.
Yes. Yes. Because it's for, it's so, my hope, I, my, the ideal number would be 24. I have no idea how many kids are going to be entrusted. I have no idea. But 24 from a logistical, I've spoken with EF people, that puts us in one bus, which is important.
It is.
Okay, so we can't take more than 24 without doubling the bus, and that doubles all the prices and stuff like that. So that's the ideal number. And then that provides us with, I think it was four chaperones through their program. Ideally, I would like all chaperones who speak Spanish, because I would like to keep this as immersion as, as possible. Because I think that, for me, that's, that's, that's a really big piece of it. We'll see. I don't know, but.
This is great.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in your packet, you had two other trips that were in there. One was, you saw the cover letter from Robert, on behalf of Jason, for the trip to Williamsburg, and that is 140 students, band, chorus, and orchestra. And that's April of 2020 as well.
But that's not April break.
It is not April break, I don't think.
Before, yeah.
Before. And then, for the fifth time, we're asking you to go to China. That is a trip to Bangbu, our, our relationship that we have, new principal at Bangbu. So Robert has already done a Skype and has, has met the new principal. And also Shanghai is on the, on the docket there as well. So asking that you approve all of those, so they can finalize their plans and get that moving.
And those two other trips, we've done them in the past.
We have.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ellen's here tonight because it's the first time.
Yeah.
And she wanted to have an opportunity to explain to you why we're doing it.
Super. Do we have a motion to?
I, I have one more question.
Okay.
Although I'm fully, in terms of thinking about financial arrangements, I know that the MMA helps kids with the orchestra, band, chorus trips through fundraising. How are we going to help include children of all economic levels to be able to access these trips? Is there a way that we can?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the challenge that we've been finding, right? I mean, I think China's 3,800.
PTO is no longer doing.
Right.
Scholarships, and the MCPE is no longer providing scholarship money for our kids. So.
So I think that's something that's on Robert's radar, and it's something that he wants to, to work on, whether it's some sort of separate fundraising just for these events. But it's conversations we've had at Leadership, not just for the high school, but also for the middle school, if we're going to be having.
Nature's classroom.
Nature's classroom, DC. I mean, we're $15,000 short for DC this year, so.
The last thing I want is kids self-editing their own opportunities, simply because they think that this isn't what they can do here.
Right.
Please.
Yeah. A few years, quite a few years ago, this is probably eight or nine years ago, the Spanish honor society leaders decided that they wanted to raise money for a scholarship for kids to go on a Spain trip. This is back when that was, you know, something that was still pretty, like, new, and, and kids, and we did, we raised quite a bit of money. Most of it's gone now. And they haven't been very active, but that's something that we could consider, like, you know, I don't know if it would necessarily be Spanish honor society or Spanish club, or Spanish, I'm just, to prove.
Or world language, I mean, ways that we can try to kind of pay this forward for multiple kids, multiple countries, multiple.
I mean, it's probably time for us to, as a district, to think about whether we do some fundraising generally for scholarships, because this is an issue that's come up numerous times this year. It's going to come up again.
Right.
So we might be looking at, instead of going to different organizations in town, maybe we do fundraising just for scholarships for kids to attend these types of trips, or whether it's a great trip, or whatever it is, because I think we're going to run into this again.
I think some of that used to be funded through magazine sales, but I don't even, I mean, people don't buy magazines anymore, right? There wasn't that part of the kind of thing.
Correct.
Yeah. Now, um, did, from what I recall, don't, do schools have angel funds?
They do. We have gift funds and angel funds. We do. So what we had to do.
A lot of it used to be funded through script, too, and scripts are on.
Correct, right.
So all of these kind of feeders.
Mm-hmm. So we have to kind of reevaluate that over the summer and see what we're going to do going forward, so that kids aren't short-changed and not be able to go to these, these different events. I mean, I think, you know, some of the, Anna Mae and I have talked about this too, is that it's, it's, it's important for all kids to be a part of this. And everyone has a better experience when all kids are involved, so.
That's exactly true.
I think that's something we need to look at.
I think any of our kids should have to miss the companionship of their, of every other one of our kids.
Right.
Simply for finances.
Great. Thank you. So do we have a motion to approve these trips?
Can I just, I just ask a question before you go?
Yeah, sure.
And also just also the suggestion. So when we've done the fundraising for China, for Cuba, and for New Orleans, one of the things that has worked particularly well that could be used for these other trips, is that oftentimes, once you have that level of initial interest of who wants to go, we've, we have been very successful in having the people who have signed up for those trips voluntarily say, I will chip in an additional $100 toward the trip fund, because I don't, I want to make sure that everybody who's in this cohort is able to go. And that's been very helpful to raise some money. People, you know, especially on a music trip, all the parents want to make sure that all the kids get to go, and they all know each other. And so people are going to put in a little bit of extra money to go for scholarships. So that's an idea for each one of these trips. I think the other question that I, that has come up over the last, I want to say, these five years, has to do with, with chaperones, especially for the really attractive trips like Italy, Spain, France, Cuba. I'm curious about, it seems like the, there's been more of a push to open up the chaperone selection to everyone in faculty, when it used to be that the. to everyone in faculty, when it used to be that the department heads of the different areas were the ones who had very specific criteria for what they wanted in the chaperone for these trips. Um, you know, for the example, uh, art department, you know, they wanna have somebody that has, uh, expertise in a certain area. Uh, and I have been hearing over the last several years that, um, it has become more of a, let's send out an email and see what one of the faculty can go. Versus, and, and in some cases having department heads that are considering about who they wanna be chaperones on these trips to be over ready. Um, I also think that, you know, you also have to think about the expense of having to bring in substitutes, um, to cover for different classes. And that can be suspended too. So, I mean, I think from the school policy, when you have a certain number of, um, people on a trip, like I think the school policy has like twenty-three or twenty-four, twenty-five, you really only need two people on that trip. And in that case, um, well, I'm just, not necessarily, not, not necessarily for foreign, cause I know you run into problems.
Yeah, I, I like, like the one to six ratio is good.
But what I'm saying is, is that in some ca- in a couple of cases where we've gotten free seats basically on the chaperone trip, and we've had the chaperone number covered by different, a lot of different ways, we've been actually use, able to use one of those free slots as a scholarship for a student that wouldn't normally be able to get one, because we've been able to cover the chaperones with parents or whatever.
Right.
People, um, and that didn't cost them much. So that's not.
Cool.
Okay. I'll take that under advisement. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Um, do we have a motion?
Uh, I motion to approve all three trips, both to the, or to the Dominican Republic, to China and to Williamsburg for, um, the twenty, nineteen-twenty school year.
Super, do we have a s- a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wonderful. Thank you again, Ellen. I'm, I'm so excited for you guys and things.
Thanks.
Kids are getting to go. Um, June workshop planning.
So matter of fact, you had that, uh, on the agenda as just, uh, a general conversation as we start to look at the agenda for that, that workshop and, you know, talk about the timeframe, talk about some of the ideas you wanna put on that agenda, whether it be goal setting or whatever, so we could be in general conversation.
Just, I've, I've started a working list here and, um, we can fine tune. But, you know, I have the calendar that, that we, that you sent around to, to kind of, it's, I like seeing a bird's eye view and making sure, like I think I forgot to write a couple of letters and, you know, just so I'm on, on top of things, um.
So that's specifically a calendar around what happens throughout the year within school committee. So it's not, yeah, so it's not like a.
May is the school choice.
Card in stone, but it is organizing us, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
I just wanna make sure that out there in TV land, everybody.
Anna May, before you go on, um, and I, I don't wanna speak on your behalf, but I know that, uh, Tim and I will be taking the, the course finally.
Yes.
Not till the twenty-second.
Correct.
So I just wanted to throw it out there. Would it make sense to have this workshop after we've kind of gotten all the information? No?
You do not need the course to partake in this.
Well, I'm just, I have the bigger picture.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
Before I know what I'm signing on.
No. I actually think, you know, I think that taking the course too soon.
Yeah, is not useful.
I had no idea what they were talking about, really.
Actually, that's why I'm taking it again. I'm taking it in June because I'm like, I, you know, when you first do it, it's.
It has greater meaning once you've kind of ridden the wave a little bit. Uh, so, so far I've got on the list and we can tweak, uh, the calendar, your, uh, bird's eye view, bus fees, um.
And not whether we would do them, but really about understanding what that decision matrix looks like. How do we think about that?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's the seventeenth, right? I'm just looking at my calendar.
Yeah, um, strategic plan. We're kind of winding down.
Right.
Twenty-twenty-one. Um, and I.
Did, did you say, excuse me, something after bus fees?
Strategic plan.
No, I heard strategic plan.
Strategic plan.
Okay. I thought you said tree planting and I was like.
We're winding down our five-year plan. Yes, sorry.
Not tree planting. Wanted to make sure.
Um, and, um, maybe look at this curriculum, the, what Dr. Martis had, would presented this evening, especially that around the input from staff members.
Another workshop coming through.
Yeah, but you know, we can.
Yeah.
How, how much?
I think one of the things I'd like to think about is, uh, school committee goals and how we assess ourselves.
Good.
Um, specifically what we're, what we're looking at and how we know that we're meeting those goals.
Good.
And I think that that can all be part of the, you know, essentially kind of a offshoot of a strategic planning kind of thing. But, you know, that we ourselves as an organization should be looking at what, what we do, how we do it and how we do it more efficiently.
Perfect.
Yeah, I mean, I've kind of, I've talked about that before. How are we organized? Where's our focus? It's the same idea.
Mm-hmm.
How, uh, much time are we, or is it the agenda topics, you know, like how much time are we thinking through?
Actually, I have a question. Would it be possible to move the date from the seventeenth to later that week, later in that week? I do have a conflict.
I am, no. I, 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 maybe we can find, not later that week. I am taking a group of kids to the border, so that won't work. When, when are you, when are you away, Leo?
Uh, I'll be back on Tuesday morning of that week. Uh, the previous, the previous two weeks I'm wide open. And then the following week, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
Is out or in?
I am available.
Sorry. So the seventeenth, you are not around. So when, when are you available bef- um, oh, so ne- we're not ready.
That's the last week of school though. I mean, I can't.
Yeah.
Imagine that we would be able to have.
Oh, no, I'm ba- I'm, I'm away. I'm away.
Right.
So I, I can't do the eighteenth and nineteenth, but I can do any of the days of the week if it, I could do the seventeenth, the twentieth. I mean, Megan had mentioned too, if, if it's, you know, during the day.
If you have it on the seventeenth, I'm going to have to bring my parents, cause they're gonna wanna see this. And that's just gonna be embarrassing.
What days do you have free, Leo, that, that week? Sorry.
Do you have Thursday and Friday open, Leo?
Yeah.
Someone has a question that machine cut out.
What, what is Thursday, what do Thursday and Friday look like? The twentieth and twenty-first. I'm just throwing those out there. I don't know if.
Perfect for me.
Um, um, I.
You can't.
I think Anna May said she's gone though.
No, no, I, I can do the twentieth.
Twentieth is great.
Megan?
I'm okay. I can do the twentieth.
Okay. Do the twentieth.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So.
I'm looking forward to the workshop.
Perfect.
Um, should we talk a little bit about the format of a workshop versus a regular school committee meeting?
Thanks, please.
So, I mean, my understanding is when we do a workshop, we do, it's obviously posted. But it's essentially more of an informal conversation.
Correct.
In which we are not seated at tables, but we really are kind of seated at a work, kind of a workspace, much like when you go to a, a warrant committee meeting. There's no public table. There's, you know, it's certainly open to the public, but it's a, a chance for us to actually be able to sit facing each other and really have discussions about what it is that we would like to be able to kind of think about, plan, brainstorm.
Correct. Cause I mean, these are a lot of topics. Cause I don't see us getting through, getting a, a deep dive into every.
Right.
Topic.
So do we have any interest in doing it during the day?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do it during the day. What do you?
I don't know what the availability is, but.
Leo, you can do it during the day. Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd prefer you pick afternoon, going later or morning, you know.
Okay.
I mean, I could do the whole day if, if necessary and just, but I.
All right. So should we find out about space and then kind of?
Okay.
We can finalize that at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Beautiful.
All right.
All right. I'm just gonna put that in a school committee day.
I, I think we would wanna zero in on that agenda a little more, cause I, I, I think we all take the bigger topics that we think are the priorities.
Yeah. So I think if we can all digest them and at the next June third meeting, we can further fine tune.
Cool.
But it's good to throw out a wish list.
Right. All right. Good. Um, and, you know, if this works, I'd like to see this become more of a part of our process. Doesn't happen, have to happen constantly, obviously. But being able to just kind of touch base in a way that's, uh, more of a, a retreat style kind of ability to kind of put our ideas out there and brainstorm.
Yeah.
Would be helpful, I think, as an organization.
Maybe a couple of times a year if it works out well.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And just to be clear, there's, you keep the seventeenth, we have school committee meeting. It stays there right now. Is that right? No, this is instead of. This, so this, that, the, the current one on the seventeenth then moves to the twentieth.
Correct.
Right, got it.
And we'll still post and all that good stuff. All right. So that is June twentieth. FY twenty budget update?
I have nothing to.
Okay, great. Any other items since posting?
No.
All righty. Um, old business, Dale Street.
So Michael is gonna give us an update, uh, on the Dale Street project. We've done a lot in the last, uh, couple of weeks around this. Uh, we, we met as a building committee and, and we hired an OPM. So, uh, Michael, we talked about that process and then submitted all the required documents to MSBA and we're moving right along. Well, Michael?
So the, uh, the process, uh, started, I think, back in February. Uh, we had, um, we had a meet as a, um, building committee. We selected a subcommittee to review, um, uh, the RFS's request for services for the OPM, um, services. So that bid went out. We got permission to put that bid out. Uh, they came in. We had twenty-five firms.
Michael, if you can just say, so the permission is granted by MSBA. So we had the right bid, send it to them and they have to approve it. So we can't send anything out unless they give us the blessing, so.
So once they approve it, then we can advertise what, where they call the central registry. And then we can also advertise in a local newspaper and we have to, um, advertise on our website, which we did. We met all the requirements. Um, we had, uh, a walkthrough, uh, where we had about twenty-six, I should say, twenty-six firms showed interest in the project. Out of the twenty-six firms that showed interest, we had about, I wanna say, uh, ten to twelve, they did a walkthrough where we go through and talk about the project. Um, and we show them, uh, the site and we show them any potential sites where we're thinking that Dale Street could, um, be an option. And then, um, and that was done, I think, five days after the bid actually opened. Um, we've received all the bids. I wanna say we've received, I, I think we received ten bids. Um, we reviewed them as a subcommittee. We had to rank them. After we ranked them, uh, we had to rank the top, uh, five. We ranked the top five. We brought four in to interview. Um, out of the four that we interviewed, we had to, um, rate those four and then we had to submit our top three to MSBA. Um, the documents that we actually sent were, I, I would say between forty to sixty pages, uh, cause we had, every step had to be documented. Um, every individual had to review every applicant, um, in ten different categories. So, um, we, the, the, the subcommittee made a recommendation to the entire building committee, which we, um, wanted to bring forward. Uh, the firm called Left Field. Uh, they're an OPM firm that have done a, they have lots of experience with the MSBA. Uh, they are currently working on the, uh, uh, the high school at Fall River. So they're working on that project currently. Um, that being said, uh, we had to submit all our paperwork with all our documentation. We got an email, I believe, on Friday. Uh, the MSBA met internally on Friday to accept projects that they will put onto their June, uh, meeting. Uh, our project was approved for the next meeting, which is June. So, um, myself, the superintendent, um, Christine, the town administrator, and I believe, uh, Leo, if Leo's available, um, the chair of the, uh, school committee will go in front of the MSBA. Um, we have to, once we're in front of the MSBA, we have to go through the requirements, why we want Left Field as our top choice. And then after that meeting, a decision will be made as, um, the selection of Left Field, so we can move forward with the feasibility study. We did get, uh, there's gonna be a package that we're, that the superintendent's gonna receive within the next couple of days. Part of that package talks about the scope of the feasibility study, um, the process, the length of the study, um, when the study has to be completed by. And the most important thing is that we get a preliminary reimbursement rate, which currently will be thirty-nine point eight-four. So that, um, rate.
That hasn't changed, right?
Correct. So it hasn't changed from the last project we did with the MSBA. Um, once we receive all that paperwork, we're more than happy to share it with the committee. We do have a contract with Left Field, but we're not allowed to sign it until after the meeting and after the approval by the MSBA. Um, and then the next step after that would be, once the OPM is on board, is that we're gonna be doing an RFS for an architect. Um, and then that process is going to take, uh, could take, you know, up to, what is it, ten to twelve months, they're telling us. Um, that whole feasibility pa- phase one, um, and we have less of a say when selecting an architect than we do with an OPM. But we're moving forward. We're, you know, fast-tracked it to June and, and that's, that's, that's the positive side of it.
Do you have less of a say in the architect because they're trying to control the costs more? Is that?
I think, uh, because they have so many projects that are out there and they know who they're approved for the architectural services. So the, we're gonna go through the same process. We're gonna rank what we feel are our top four. But when we go into the MSBA, I believe, and I, I, someone correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the town has three votes. And then I believe the MSBA has something like twelve to thirteen votes, um, on who the architect is. Where in, on this side, on the OPM side, are, they usually nine out of ten times will, uh, move forward our number one choice. So. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Michael's done a ton of work on this, so we appreciate it.
Lovely. All righty. Um, future elementary enrollment.
So we're keeping this on as an agenda item ongoing. Um, nothing really new, except we're not, we're not seeing that big push at kindergarten right now with enrollment. So we're, we also have noticed all the for sale signs, so we're expecting it to come over the summer.
Would you like the bedroom count?
Yeah, I know. I know. It's, so we're expecting it.
It's, it's literally in the seventies right now. Seventies?
So we're, we're expecting it to come over the summer.
And that's not under contract?
We have, um, we have six spaces left in full-day kindergarten and, um, we have only seventeen registered right now for half-day. So that's, I think it's, uh, thirteen in morning session and four in the afternoon session. So, we have room. We're just waiting for it to, waiting for it to get here.
All right.
Nothing, nothing new on bus fees, other than the fact that Mike and I have had conversations with, um, maybe other superintendents, Michael, other business people, um, about looking at, again, not, we're not gonna, you know, we're not saying they're doing this right now. We're not gonna bring you a proposal tomorrow. We're just talking and looking at what it would cost for us to buy our own buses and run the whole transportation system ourselves, instead of doing what we've been doing now. It's getting close to the amount of money we're paying per year in a contract, once you add on all the trips that, field trips, athletics, all of that. Where we may be in a situation, if we at least own buses over five years, that we'd be in decent shape to take that over for ourselves. So we're, we're taking a look at it. It's something that we'll, we'll bring up to you again in the fall as we go through it. Um, but it's, you know, the frustration that we all have with our current vendor, who does a great job and, you know, not many issues. It's just the cost piece is really frustrating.
Are there many districts that, um, that do that?
So Chris was superintendent in Foxborough when they did it. Um, Millis does it as well.
Acton, Boxborough.
Acton, Boxborough does it.
Right.
Um, not a lot, but enough where we need to take a look at it and see what the benefit would be for us.
It gives us a level of flexibility around a lot of other things too.
We could have a late bus. We could do anything, all the things we wanna do. If we own them, we control all that, so. Just something that we're gonna look into and report back to you on.
Okay, interesting. Donations?
Yes. So I have a list of donations in your narrative. Uh, first one was Wheelock School. Uh, one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollar donation from Wheelock PTO for grade three presentation. Dale Street, a new twenty-six inch snow blower from manager Mark Rockman at Lowe's Home Improvement Center in Framingham. And that was the end of the year donation that, um, they were going to donate to something else and they couldn't. It fell through at corporate level. Um, so Maureen Barrett pushed again to say, well, how about a snow blower? And that's what they.
I love Maureen.
Um, so Maureen Barrett pushed again to say, well, how about a snow blower? And that's what they, I know, so that's what they ended up giving us, it was great. Blake Middle School, seventy-five fifty from Box Tops, uh, depositing the Blake gift account. Two thousand five hundred from Blake PTO for Creature Feature. Um, three thousand from Blake PTO for Challenge Success, and that paid for half of the, uh, survey that we did at the middle school level. Uh, one thousand three hundred from Blake PTO to Midsummer's, for Midsummer's Night Dream, eight hundred from Blake PTO to La Pinada. Uh, one hun- one thousand dollars from Medfield Music Association to compensate Blake Middle School Chamber Strings Ensemble Director. At the high school level, two thousand five hundred from the Medfield Music Association to compensate the high school chamber orchestra position. And also last of the high school, two thousand eight hundred seventy from the high school students' activity. Cafe Rita Latte fundraiser, begging for books to be deposited into high school gift account. I ask that you approve all those as shared and read.
Excuse me, before you vote, um, the ten thousand, the microphone donation, are you given a letter the night of town meeting? So I'm just wondering about the status of that one.
It's still under review.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, as Dr. Morrison has read.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goes, thank you.
And the informational items that I have is just as required, the two boards I sit on, um, to share and not present or anything, just to share them with you, so the tech, FY twenty budget and the accept FY twenty budget, um, if there's any questions on there, I can certainly either answer them or I know where to get the answers, uh, for those. But we've, we've voted those budgets through already, um, at a recent meeting, so it's just.
Yeah.
A requirement that, um, the state has made us as directors, I mean, as, uh, board members on collaboratives to share that with school committees.
Uh, on the accept collaborative, um, what other major impacts have you seen from Framingham pulling out of that in terms of their budgets? Are there things that we aren't seeing that accept is seeing with the other communities around?
Well, one of the things that they're doing is they're not gonna use a third-party vendor, so they, because of the volume that they had with transportation, they would use a third-party vendor and accept staff, so now they're just using accepts, accept staff only.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the third-party vendor that they used, previously the last couple of years, has signed a contract to Framingham to do theirs. So, we'll see how that all works out.
Yeah, this is what I have learned about the educational system in Medfield. It's like, okay, so here's the shell and then that, we'll go over here and you guys, yeah.
Yeah, we were told that Framingham has a savings next year of three hundred thousand dollars, uh, because they're, of this transportation move, so, as we've said to them.
We said, you're welcome for the hundred and fifty.
Well, I mean, the thing is, is that, that, it's kind of like those teaser rates you get, right?
Yeah.
So the teaser rate is a two or three-year contract with this company and then we'll see, but they're gonna make that money up the next time we're on, so. And we let them know not to ask to be part of our transportation after that.
Alright, that's really all I wanted to know. Thank you.
That's all I have, ma'am chair.
Okey-dokeys, future agenda items, FY twenty budget, elementary report card committee, um, Medfield twenty-twenty-one, goals three, four, and five. And I've got to email invites to MCPE, PTOs, the MMA, the theater program, just like last year they presented, because they are so generous. Um, uh, and we are very grateful to them, so we'll ask them for some updates. And then, um, MAP will present as well in our next meeting.
We'll have some policies. Um, Mary's gonna be here at the next meeting to review some policies, so we'll have some first readings, um, at that meeting and then, um, hopefully second reading in, in Au- in August.
Okay, so this, this seems like a, an action-packed meeting and, and we're gonna go over what, how we're gonna run the, um, workshop. I'm wondering when it would be appropriate for an SEL update. I mean, we just wrapped up our last.
Right.
Meeting, and I think there were just, uh, uh, you know, just a few nuggets of takeaways that I think. Tim, what do you think?
I, I mean, I think the SEL, I, I think it's appropriate, play, I'm part of it and I think it's, I may even say have a vested interest. I, I think it's great that we share what's going on. And you just have to look at.
Yeah, can, can Susan or Dave, yeah.
You may, um, if you're asking him.
Is that the one where we stayed up all night the night before?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Suck it up.
Excellent.
That's when you go to the big giant Starbucks, yeah.
Right, it's that night. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And Maddie will be.
And Maddie's like, I'm done with you.
Yes, so at this time, we'll have some.
I'm gonna let Campbell.
Okay.
Take the mic for what's going on in the school right now.
Alright, um, so since the last time Maddie was here when she presented, we've had prom for the juniors and seniors, which was great, a lot of fun, I think personally, I think. Well, it's kind of hard to be unbiased because it was my student government that planned it. But I think the venue as a whole, in the plane that went to it, was successful and I think, um, it was done well, especially with the student government and the prom committee. Um, as you know, that the seniors are done and until gradu- graduation, including Maddie, and we had a senior spirit week to kind of celebrate their last week within s- in school, as well as a kisses senior goodbye, so that was the whole, you buy her she kisses for the, your senior friends and all that, just to kind of say goodbye and like.
Cute.
Recognize it. And then we've also been selling grad signs for the seniors and we're just really looking forward to graduation, which we will be helping add at, to make sure it goes smoothly. Because it's a big moment for all the seniors who are graduating.
I thought it was super cute how you guys held the signs that one morning.
I just wanna thank you guys for a great year. You guys have helped me become much more involved with the school in Medfield. And I feel more in the loop now. And, yeah, it's been really fun and I loved getting to know you guys.
We love having you, thank you.
I loved your energy, and, and how willing you were to kind of like get in there and participate. It's been nice, I liked it.
Tim?
Tim, do you got anything you wanna?
Parting thoughts?
Parting thoughts?
Is that where, are we at that?
Yes, we're there. We're at deep thoughts portion.
No, I mean, it's, uh, I've only, I guess this is my second.
Yeah.
Meeting, so this was, there's a lot more covered today. I look at the next agenda, there's a lot of topics, there's a lot of meaty topics, a lot of areas you can dig in. But no, nothing top of mind.
He's here? He's gone.
Is he gone?
Is he gone?
Yeah, he was having a hard time connecting, he texted me.
Okay.
He's gone? Oh, alright, okay. Sorry, Leo, okay. Um, yeah, I, uh, I agree. We got a lot of good work coming up and, um, like you mentioned, Jess and Anne Mae and I had a great old time on, on the Hill, even though some of our representatives were not in that day, but, um, it was a great experience.
Good conversation.
It, it was, uh, very good experience and, um, there's a lot of people doing a lot of good things for education right now and it was kind of empowering to, to feel a part of that. Um, and i- it's funny that we have been talking about all these class trips because I'm sending my oldest off to Washington DC tomorrow. So I gotta get home and remove all contraband items from his luggage. Um, and I will also be.
Good luck with that.
Be touring Medfield tomorrow with the third grade class of my son, so I'll be, I have not seen the Peak House yet, I'm psyched. So I will be in the Peak House tomorrow. And, uh, I'm glad that the rain came today and hopefully it'll be beautiful tomorrow, so. I'll be up at five forty-five, I think.
Do you want to take that?
Yeah, dropping him off. And then getting on a bus with a bunch of third graders.
So, thank you Maddie and welcome Campbell.
Thanks.
It's nice to see you.
It's good.
Um, I wanna, I guess I don't have anything terribly important. I did get the opportunity to be at all of the schools today when they did a, um, a drill, I'm sorry.
Safety drill.
Safety drill, thank you. And, um, I, I mean, I think that was just a great experience in that it was fast and calm and very well executed. Um, and I was glad to be able to see it across an entire spectrum of kids from the high school all the way down to the youngest of the elementary students. Um, and I guess that's really about it. I know I had something else, but I'm gonna move on.
You're looking at me like I?
Yeah, no, I, well, you're my organizing factor right there. No, I think that's about it. Um, I also had a, I have to say, a oh, really what I consider, don't laugh, a really intellectually stimulating, uh, time on the search committee. I really felt as the, the search committee for the, uh, director of, uh, instruction innovation was so educational to me, you know, that if, if the person is half as, I mean, Christine is, I mean, she was obviously great and we were so enamored of her, but for me personally, I felt like that was just a really wonderful experience and, and a real chance to be able to kind of have a, a meeting of the minds and a real debate, you know, around what our values are as a system. And, and who we are and what that, what that's gonna look like by this person, so that was a real privilege.
It was, it was. Thank you, Dr. Morrison, for leading that. And I'm excited for you, Jeff, and the leadership team, that it's really kind of, it's forming and I, I, I look forward to that potential. Um, so, um.
And she's got a graduate.
I've got a senior, so I'm just always so sad. It's bittersweet.
Joyful, joyfully sad.
But just a little hard and, um.
You're so sweet. Thank you. I'm about to goodbye soon, so.
But, um, we've appreciated your voice and your, um, your input, your perspective, so thank you, we wish you all the best at nursing school and beyond and, um, also you were teaching for me and so thank you for all you've done and contributed and shared with even the younger kids, so thank you very much. And Campbell, we look forward to having you and again.
You'll do great.
Yes, you will. I just, I still think of him as the beast, though.
Seriously, like, when we are talking, when we're thinking, when we're doing these things, you, you are a part here. In fact, you're the reason that we are here. So, pipe up. When you have things that you really wanna say or you feel like impact you, we wanna hear them.
And I hear you did a great job at the, um, Challenge Success Student Panel, which I was very sorry to miss, um, because of a, another child's commitment, but, um, I heard that was a, an amazing evening, very productive, in- insightful as well, and it was a great opportunity. I'm very grateful to Nikki Gusterson and their parent portion of the Challenge Success, so thank you, um, for being a part of that. And, um, I can't talk about the seniors anyways. Oh, I do wanna mention how proud I am and grateful for Marissa Gumas. Marissa Gumas, how she was a, a finalist for Teacher of the Year, so top three, I think it was. So we're very fortunate to have Marissa in our district along with so many other teachers, so.
I just have a couple.
Please.
In addition to Marissa, um, we were, Nat and I were involved in that process from the time she got to be a semifinalist on, so that was really need to be a part of that and support her during that process and, uh, you know, she, um, she put herself out there and had to go to, do just certain interviews and they came and visited and observed her teaching, so, you know, that's really taking a risk and, uh, I just appreciate it. Every, what she does every day, but especially during that process, that's not easy. Um, just a couple of things, uh, as Campbell said, prom was awesome. Uh, we had a great time at prom this year and the sun came out just as the kids were arriving, which was really nice, after kind of a lousy day, so that worked out really well. And, and once again, uh, every time that we have at Gillette, they always comment to us how well behaved and polite our kids are, which is always nice to hear. Um, last Saturday, uh, the SEL, uh, excuse me, the Challenge Success Team, uh, spent the day at Concord Carlisle. Uh, with all other, it was their East Coast, um, uh, workshop day. And there was actually s- some folks in Midwest there too, who were working with a district from Wisconsin. And, uh, many, many districts there and it was really, you know, you, you kind of go through this process and you start doing things and you implement and you start talking to everyone. And you got to see how well we're really doing with this here, even after one year. It was all first-year school districts and people were like, you guys did this, you did this, you did this. And Denise Pope, who is the, who started all this, um, stopped me before we left and just said, you know what, just keep up the great work, you guys are really doing some good things. So that was great for her to t- tell us that, give us that feedback. And again, once you start comparing to other communities that are doing the same thing you're doing at the same place and the same starting point, and you see how much we have done, uh, and so much more to go, of course, but it was just a good, good feeling, um, in, in our, I wanna thank everyone at Challenge Success for spending their Saturday. The first sunny sixty-five degree Saturday we've had all spring, so that was great. Um, also wanna thank the SEL Task Force people, um, just a great group of folks that, that come together every five to six weeks and they made their recommendations at our last meeting, so I think it's, it's only natural that the June third meeting should highlight some of the work that they've been doing, so. A lot of recommendations came out of that. I know just from the, uh, curriculum group alone, there were, I think, thirteen or fourteen recommendations out of that group alone, so, uh, we got a lot of work to do around that. Yeah, I think some highlights.
Not, not the, not everything.
Definitely not everything, because we'll be here all night.
Yes.
Um, and just wanna thank Campbell again for what, what he does with the Passport Group. They had their last, their last meeting, uh, was that last week?
It was last week.
Yeah, last week, so, um, just a really neat idea that, that he, his mom, his sister, that they, they put it together to enrich our kids and it's just an awesome event for our kids, so I wanna thank him for doing all that great work.
It was a program at Wheelock that my sister and I pioneered with, with my mom, it was a, it was a program that already existed in other school systems, uh, one or two nearby, but it was just mostly helping teach geography to, um, elementary school kids, like second and third graders, as well as having people who are from different countries come teach to second and third graders and also just learning a lot of just interesting stuff, kind of diving deeply into specific countries as well as learning a lot of locations and other, just information about other nations and just worldliness.
It's really cool.
It's the compass.
Really good. Great. That's all I have, ma'am chair.
Alright, so, motion to adjourn?
Uh, I motion that we adjourn.
I second that.
Alrighty, thank you, Maddie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie.
Thank you, Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you.